Good morning. We'll call this meeting Wayne County Commissioners to order. Any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pousset?
Aye. Approve for our viewing audience this morning. We do have Commissioner Burns on the telephone here with us. And we will be doing roll call on all of our votes, which is new and different from what we normally do on there. Okay. Got the minutes out. How about the bills? Mary Ann?
Move for approval of the MasterCard claims dated April 13th.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pousset?
Aye. Approved.
Regarding the claims of April 15th, I know we had a long discussion last Wednesday regarding the Health Center clinic claims. I'm wondering if, Ron, you had any further discussion with the Auditor's Office regarding the retainer for the consulting firm?
Actually, they're going to break that down into two, as I understood at least, two invoices. And it'll correlate with services being rendered contemporaneously with the billing. I had to follow up with Kim and see if that's been done or not. But that's what I talked to Rick Boston.
So it's in the works?
Yeah, so I would not take any action on that claim. I think it's going to be replaced.
If they're going to resubmit it, I see it was not reflective in this week's claims, but it can be accommodated before June 1?
Yes.
So, okay, it would be. And I see there's some additional ones. I just, I was just curious as to what would be coming through in this week's claims. I see they are not, but as long as we were dealing with this week's claims, I thought it'd be good to have some clarification on that. I move for approval of the claims dated April 15th.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pousset?
Aye. Approved. Sign those, Mary Ann?
Yes. And could you give the minutes to Beth? I just have one tiny little nitty gritty thing on page three. FX, FX.
Okay.
You know my FX, FX.
Very good. Okay, Ron?
I really don't have a lot that can be dealt with, Matt or Stephen, to come up. But the one issue that I, I'm not sure I know where we ended up is on the joint executive order that we modified last week. The modifications were approved by the mayor, but I don't know if that's been, we have not signed it, have we?
Uh, no.
Okay, well then I got, I've got the clean copy here.
Okay.
And I'll, we'll make copies and sign that before we leave today, okay?
Okay, all right.
That's all.
That's all. Matthew?
I must say that I was very pleased to see citizens responding with additional frequency of wearing masks and separations. I did not get to any big boxes since that was announced. Have you observed any changed activity in the big box stores?
The change that I have seen in the stores, as far as having a person at counter at the front door, what they've done, they've put up a sign that says, you know, 20 people are allowed in the store, whatever it happens to be. I was in one store and their sign said 431 people were allowed in the store. That's been the only change that I've seen, although they are wearing the masks and stuff, which is good.
Good morning, sir.
And I went to inquire.
We're going to be up here very shortly.
They are sanitized. Did you see any additional masks on customers?
It's, it depends. I'm seeing more than I used to see, but does everybody have them when they're out? You know, I wear mine, the minute I leave the building, I put mine on. A lot of people still aren't yet, but yeah, it's certainly better than what it was initially when we first started.
You ready?
We're ready.
You ready, Barry? Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Here this morning primarily, I have Mr. Barry Ritter on the speakerphone here, representing Ritter Strategic Consultants on behalf of Union County. Union County and the consultant reached out to us several weeks ago about signing an emergency memorandum of understanding with the Union County Commissioners for the operations of their dispatch center. And so we've been working with their leaders and their 911 director and Mr. Ritter. And I believe he wanted to share a little bit about where, how we came about to where we're at today. So, go ahead, Barry.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning, Barry.
Hey, I appreciate the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you this morning. Matthew has been a, and Aaron have been a lifesaver in helping me build this memorandum of understanding for emergency backup services for Union County. MOUs are not anything new. We've had them for years. In fact, when I was in Matthew's position, we had one of these for Randolph County to be the backup center for Wayne and for Wayne to be the backup for Randolph. With the onset of the COVID-19, I also continue doing work for the State 911 Board. We have assisted counties in developing these MOUs across the state. In the event that a 911 center was to have a significant number of personnel that was impacted by the COVID-19 and they could not staff their centers appropriately. So this MOU actually serves a dual purpose. It was created for the radio project, but would also be applicable if Union County was to be impacted by the virus and vice versa if Wayne County, for some reason, was to have a loss of personnel and temporarily needed to have calls rerouted. Union County, Kenny, you've been involved with this, with me, for a number of years. Small rural county, little tax base, little 911 revenue. In the last 24 months, they've taken two lightning strikes to their radio equipment and audio logger in the county. They've been operating on a limited amount of resources for about 18 months as we settled with the insurance company. And twice in the last three months, they totally lost their radio that they have. They're operating on three different frequencies is all they have. Knowing that we were going to have to go through a procurement process, we've lost the radio system twice and it always seems to be in the middle of the night, I reached out to Matthew and Aaron to determine if Wayne County would be in a position to take over dispatching, receiving 911 calls and dispatching for Union County in the event that that radio system goes out and cannot be restored. The law enforcement dispatching, the medical dispatching was the easy part of this. Inherently, it's the volunteer fire paging, setting off the tones, that we have to come up with additional procedures. Matthew has to be credited with working with the Mark system and having the capability for the Ohio system to be programmed into your radios. And that was just an added plus for us to come to Wayne County and gives them the ability to communicate with Butler County to page out West College Corner. Liberty Fire, we've utilized the alert system that was developed for Wayne County and will be built out for Liberty Fire to use. I think probably the most important thing to discuss here is there are two parts to this MOU. The first is for unplanned interruption of service, we lose the radio system. Something goes down, this MOU is in place. We consider that a short-term scenario and would not exceed 14 days without approval of the Commissioners there in Wayne County. And then the other is a planned outage in the event that the center took a hit with the virus and could not staff a particular shift because they are currently understaffed and are working long shifts and having very few days off. So with that high-level overview, I'll try and answer any questions that you may have. But on behalf of the Commissioners in Union County and the 911 staff there, I would urge you to seriously consider adopting this MOU and being that resource for Union County.
Very minor reprogramming had to be done. We had a radio that was not being utilized currently, so we were able to repurpose that radio and had it reprogrammed to Union County's frequency. So our tower here in Richmond was able to talk to their tower in Liberty with no problems. And their law enforcement and EMS are both dispatched off of that tower. And the reprogramming, that was, we did not pay for that. Barry paid for that and then will be, I'm sure, reimbursed by Union County. So it's come as no expense to us.
I guess the one thing I did skip over is that Union County is nowhere close to the service center that the PSAP in Wayne County is. In 2019, they averaged six 911 calls a day. 2017 and 18, they averaged seven 911 calls a day. They typically have one town marshal on duty at a time and one sheriff's deputy on duty at a time. So their call load is significantly less. And in talking with Matthew and Aaron, I anticipated that this would not impact their staffing on a day-to-day basis absent an emergency that took place.
Now, don't those numbers increase significantly when Whitewater State Park is open and at capacity?
Were you able to hear her, Barry?
Did she ask if the numbers increased when the state park?
Yes, yes.
Was open?
Yeah, seasonal.
Yeah. Let's see, last year, this time last year in April, they had 177 calls. May, 193. June, 181. July, 202. So at their peak, they would have increased, what, by?
30.
25 calls?
Yeah.
In the month. So not significantly.
And that was one question I had asked Mrs. Brown, their 911 director. She had reassured me that normally in the season, DNR does a very good job of adding additional resources to the state park along with Indiana State Police. I believe they even have a couple of ISP troopers that live in Union County.
Right.
And so they have even been known to come out when they're not technically on duty just to assist if it's needed. So, and then they also utilize the ISP Pendleton Dispatch Post, which is also what we use. So that would be a seamless transition that if we needed ISP, we would call them like we do any given day for assistance in Wayne County.
Thank you for addressing that. I was very concerned.
Absolutely.
Barry, in your discussion of us being a backup for them, did you readdress again about the possibility of eventually down the road letting us actually dispatch for them? I know you and I have talked about that for several years.
Yeah. We have maintained that as a topic of discussion. The only thing that has not brought that to the forefront today is that they currently have a director that's extremely dedicated and is working very diligently to maintain staffing levels and equipment. But, you know, I've had that conversation with Paul Wee Wee, who was there, Kenny, when we talked about this before. I've had this conversation with the two new Commissioners that were not involved in that, that at some point, that may be a realistic discussion that they would have to have with you here at Wayne County.
All right. Thank you.
That's low volume by our standards.
Well, and that's kind of what I said tongue-in-cheek. One bad accident on the interstate and we have more than that calls. So we've looked at the numbers, not only just their 911 calls, but their calls for service, the number of traffic stops and those types of things that you don't see on a 911 number. And even then, they're only averaging about 20 a day. And that includes traffic stops. And our numbers, even as I stand here, I've been tracking our numbers very closely over the last several weeks, but our numbers are fluctuating, what, 20 to 40? 20 to 40 calls any given day, so we can easily absorb that. Now, if we were looking at more of a long-term type situation, we may need to look at our minimum staffing requirements and some policies that we have like that. But for the short-term emergency situations, it should not affect us that much at all.
I appreciate you examining the questions that I had.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Definition of short-term, tightening up that was much appreciated and after.
You saw where that language had been added in there?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
That was much appreciated because, you know, good intentions are so often.
Absolutely.
Run off the rails when they're just not tightly defined. And while we really have such good relationships with Union County and they've been good friends and neighbors and we want to remain that way. And that's what defining and eliminating the gray and having it very well defined, I think, can keep us good friends and neighbors going forward.
Absolutely.
My feeling, Ken, is that this has been very thoroughly thought out and can keep us in good stead going forward. So I would like to move for approval of this memorandum of understanding. I think it's very thorough. All the contingencies have been anticipated. So I move for approval of this MOU with Union County.
I'll second that.
Okay. Beth, please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pousset?
Aye. Passed. Thank you very much. Barry, thank you very much for working with Union County. We'll look forward to working with you in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Barry.
Uh-huh. Thanks, Matthew.
And then just, sorry.
What?
Well, I'm sure they'll want one.
Yeah, I was going to say at least two or three, probably. Yes, and I've got one as well.
Here's one.
And then just one last thing before I go. If you've been on social media any at all this week, I wanted to bring to attention that this is National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. This is a week that is set aside for recognition of our dispatchers each year. They are truly on the front lines now more than ever in this pandemic. They are, we are asking them to screen every caller that the responders in the field may come in contact with. So they're literally screening 200 to 250 callers a day to try to keep our responders safe. And this is actually the first year that they are considered first responders in the state of Indiana legally. Governor Holcomb signed that directive, I believe, March 18th or 19th, so just about a month ago, almost to the day. So I know we are on restricted access in the dispatch center. Otherwise, I would welcome you down there. But even an email or a thank you card or something, I'm sure, would be very much appreciated. A lot of times, they just, that appreciation goes much further than any other action that could be, so. Anything else for me?
Matt, before you leave.
Yes.
I'm aware that you and Kim and indirectly I have had communication about the ability of a public official, or in this case, a department head, to require their employees to mask while on duty in situations where they may not be practically able to have or maintain social distancing or at least distancing that would be desired. I think, Matt, you have a situation like that down there, do you not?
We did. Our current policy that we have in place due to the pandemic is that if an employee, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but if an employee calls in sick, they have certain requirements they have to meet before they can come back to work based on CDC guidelines for essential workers. And we base those with the direction of Dr. Kraft off the requirements for the healthcare workers. So it is three days fever-free or 72 hours fever-free. But then, once they come back to work, they are required to wear a mask for a period of seven days. And that's what got called into question a little bit.
I just think that ought to be, that policy ought to be endorsed by the Commissioners so that there's no question about the propriety of it.
We just have to be so cautious to not have illness get into the center because when they're sitting in relatively close proximity for 12 hours at a time, it would just spread like wildfire. And so that's why we have tried to take every precaution that we can. And I think it's even hurt some feelings that some of our officers can't come down and visit the dispatchers, but we just cannot take that chance right now. It's nothing personal. It's nothing personal, I can't let the Commissioners in right now. You know, nothing like that at all. We're just doing everything we can to protect them. We've had several that have been very concerned about then taking it home to their families. And so I think some of these actions that Aaron has put in place has also given them peace of mind that we're trying to do what we can to protect them.
The Chair would so entertain a motion to authorize any elected official or department head to be able to tell their folks that they have to wear a mask during working hours.
So moved.
I'd like to, of course, they can, but I'd like to encourage them. Ron, I think you were going beyond May to.
Well, I think the encouragement that's contemplated by the motion that's on the floor would be coming from the department head or elected official. And I think that would be, probably go beyond the term encouragement.
Right. It says you will.
You will.
Right.
And I think Matt's explained his situation. And I would hope that there would be some attempt on the part of the office holders and department heads to apply this authority in a judicious manner. And obviously, if someone's potentially symptomatic and they, but they meet.
And that's, that's the only time, right. That's the only time ours is if they've been off sick and they come back. That's the only time that it's a requirement.
You know, before we have this motion, I'd kind of like to have our HR Director part of this discussion because we have people who are regularly meeting the public. And, you know, we have some seasonality to that. And we have some departments that are, see the public. We have some departments that have physical activity where wearing a mask is different from someone who is seated at a desk. I think we need to craft the language in this. Could you give us a language that you, Aaron, have for your 911 department? I'd like to look at that language.
And Kim has a copy of our policy. We ran it past her for approval prior to this.
You know, this is an HR slash House Department slash emergency first responder. I think the language needs to be very carefully drafted. And I know, well, Denny, your motion was that elected officials and department heads may instruct their, but I think it needs to be a little more declarative than that. And I think the language, I think, needs to be.
I thought my motion was to tweak our policy to allow department heads and elected officials to make that call.
Actually, has authorized other elected officials or department heads to invoke the same policy?
I didn't hear that.
I thought that's what I heard him say.
Yeah, she just repeated your motion.
I thought it was.
What she thought, to invoke that policy, to do it, yeah. Ron, do you, what do you think? Do we need some special or?
No, I mean, I think that's fine. I think the legal context we're talking about here kind of is a follow-up to discussions that you might have had in that roundtable Association of the AIC or?
Well, both.
Both, okay. And that is where, what is the lawful source of directives during this time of pandemic. And I think that generally speaking, the source of those directives is the executive branch of a particular body, whether it's the governor for the state of Indiana or for counties, other than Marion County, County Commissioners. So that's the clarity I wanted to make sure we had on the record since no one disputes the wisdom of Matt's policy. But I, you know, it does go beyond the literal reading of all of the governor's executive orders to date. So this would need to emanate from, in my opinion, the Commissioners. But I thought Denny's wording was fine. I mean, I, you know. But I think at Mary Ann's point, we'd like to see it in writing. I can't argue with that. I haven't seen your policy, but I'm sure you've accurately.
But just, just wearing a mask after being ill, I really don't think is adequate. I think wearing a mask if you are actively, regularly meeting the public as some people do.
Well, some of the departments are now wearing the mask. If they talk with the public, they are doing that.
Well, if you want to just limit it to giving that full discretion to the elected official or department head, that would address Mary Ann's concern. If any employee feels like they're not being properly treated, then they can address that with their official or department head. And if necessary, then bring the issue to the Commissioners to look at. But I think you wanted a more general, as opposed to Matt's policy of return from symptom, return to work after some demonstration.
Right. That's not quite fair.
I have to be careful, I have to be careful with the type of mask that our dispatchers wear, otherwise it will muffle their voice, which that's their only form of communicating.
And if they're delivering a baby on the telephone, you don't want to be muffled, right?
Exactly. So that's the reason why ours was limited only to that specific time.
Right.
That's our individual case. I can't speak for other departments or.
And I will offer, the public coming into the building, I get the sheet at the end of every day. And I don't think it has exceeded five individuals during the nine-hour period for any given.
Lately. At first, it was quite a few to the.
So the employees meeting the public?
Are limited.
Just isn't happening right now.
And those that have to go out into the public should be masked anyhow.
Right.
That's because we're talking about at a workstation at this point.
And even on those, with those four or five employees we have in here, in those areas that we have folks coming into, we're sanitizing those areas on a regular basis. The Platteroom 1, which we have folks coming in on a daily basis. Not a lot, as you can tell by the records better in. And we do sanitize those areas in the evening time just to make sure that that area is safe for those folks that are coming in and that they're not going to pass something on to the rest of us. And I think we've done an excellent job in keeping government open and keeping our folks safe. As Matthew has said, all we need is one in here to, could shut this whole place down. And that certainly would be a real problem if that happened, yes.
I think we're going to have an increase in individuals requesting appointments in the Treasurers and the Auditor's Office in the month ahead. And we do have people going outside, you know, assessors, probation, highway. You know, it's not just people coming to this building. We have, you know, and with the election in 48 days, there will be, you know, voter registration, people, election. I just really would like to look at the policy that we are emulating before we adopt the 911 center's policy.
Well, you won't.
We're not adopting his policy.
You won't want to adopt ours. You won't want to adopt ours. It was written specifically for our department.
And that's the motion, as I understand it.
Now, basically, the motion that was on the floor is authorizing the department head or the elected official to be able to authorize folks in their area to wear the mask. That's basically what the motion is. It's not, we're not adopting his policy. His is going to be different than any of the others that we would have.
Well, that wasn't the motion, as I understand it. Could the motion be restated?
I heard the Denny Burns motion to authorize other elected officials or departments to invoke the same policy.
Which is that same policy being the 911 Senator's policy?
Denny needs to amend his motion, because you haven't seconded it yet, have you?
No.
No.
I will amend it to address any department head or elected official to create their own policies.
Denny, I think we can do better than that with some careful thought and deliberation.
I think we're making this very, very difficult when this is so simple.
I think you all want the same thing. It's just semantics at this point.
Yeah. You're making it so difficult, where you just say you allow each elected office to set the policy in their office. If they want to wear, all of them to wear masks, they can say, "You're going to wear a mask all day long." And it's not simple, really.
And departments.
Oh, we're having problems with that, because Mary Ann's wanting a lot more detail, Denny.
Well, I think we can provide better guidance for our directory boards.
I don't agree with that at all. I think we've got smart people working for us that know exactly what to do, and all we're doing is meddling in their job. We should create the policy that allows them to do the right thing, not tell them what to do.
I just think we can give this a little more thought.
Well, give it a little more thought, and we'll come back to it, okay?
Yeah, let's come back to it.
All right. We'll give Mary Ann a little more time, give it a little more thought, okay, Denny?
Okay.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Okay.
Sorry, Matt.
That's okay.
Thank you. Been a pleasure.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right. Steve, you're up.
It's a matter of gloves in some departments. You're handling cash.
Not to raise your conversation that you just tried to squelch, but have you, you need to start giving some thought as to what the reopening of the building needs to look like. And as you see, this generates a lot of conversation. So it would seem to me that you want to have it sooner than later, because as I, I would anticipate, we would have some sort of soft opening, at least bringing the employees back the first of the month, which is just a couple of weeks away. Now, having said that, we're getting requests, and this segues into the conversation we had through email of having some reconfigured offices, having these shields installed. I know you had a specific request from one particular office, but obviously, you know there's going to be some other conversation. Once that office has the shields, there's going to be other offices want shields. So I see that kind of going beyond just one or two, and probably 10 or 15 of these shields. And then we've had a one office that has requested a reconfiguration. They currently have people come to their desk to meet with them. They want to move their workstation or work terminals to their counters so that they no longer have that interaction.
Great idea.
So you can see, you've got some issues that maybe needs to have a little more across-the-board decision so that all of our offices are kind of treated the same, so that we don't have each individual office reconfiguring, at least so that there's some consistency. For example, I assume we're still in, or still will be in the next couple of weeks, the 30% reduction in the manpower. So that takes us up through the first of the month. And then, as we look at the potential of reopening the building, do we start bringing employees back and still having the public through appointments only with some different guidelines? For example, the masks, wearing the mask, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess I would urge you to start having these conversations.
I think one of the assumptions in the last conversation that I was going to ask you about, if we were, if a department head were to require masking at the workstation, do we have masks available to provide?
No, we don't.
Yeah, we have limited masks. Now, whether we could provide, I don't know what number that might look like, especially if you start expanding that out to employees in other offices. I'm pretty sure we don't have enough masks for that.
Well, the ones that we have now at the Public Health Department are, the PPEs that we have there are very limited, and we're utilizing those in nursing homes and other places like that. We would be kind of down on the list in quite a ways. So we do have the one shipment that is due in, tentatively it was due on the 15th, but the date was 15th through the 21st of April. Now, if we get that shipment in, then we'll have a much larger supply of PPE equipment, but we'll have to wait and see if that comes in on schedule. So many of them, as you know, you order, and they'll tell you two weeks or something. And then, as you know, Mary Ann, the ones you order, they either get canceled or they come back in and it delays. We'll have to wait and see. If we get that shipment in, then we're going to be in a much better position than we currently are at this time. But I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. I do like, Mary Ann, the research that you did on the portable clear acrylic. I really like that. And as I've looked at that, and Steve and I looked at it yesterday, to me, that looks like our answer for all of our departments, because it is portable, and you can move it, and it'd be something I think we can do, and the cost is not exorbitant in that. And I know Steve's working on the possibility of another individual through one of the departments that's looked also at what they might do. I think this one has a lot of possibility. I do think that the opening of when we bring people back to work is going to be longer than what folks are talking about. I guess my gut feeling says we're not going to be opening early May at all. I think we're going to peak later than April. They're saying, actually, this week they think we might peak. But I, you know, I'm looking at those graphs, and I follow that daily. And I hope it does peak, but my gut keeps telling me we're closer to the end of April before we really start peaking here, which would run us into May, which gives us time. But I grant you, Steve, you can't start too early of trying to figure out what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, because it takes time, even on this equipment, two to three weeks, I'm sure, before you could even get it in, if they're not completely out of stock, you know?
Plus, I've already had one, one elected officials indicate to me that will the shields be a permanent fixture, because they are seeing the general public as the calls there. People are getting edgy, and people are a little more, little more not so nice to deal with, if you will. And they are concerned that these shields, once you put them portable, that they'll be able to knock them over if they have a conflict with a, I'm just passing on the conversation.
If you get a chance, go by our offices. We had shields erected, both at the lower street level reception area, and then at our upper level by the same person. And, you know, they're sturdy, but yet, if and when we wanted to remove them, easily removable.
Okay.
Well, you didn't answer my question. I guess I'm looking for some guidance on these shields. What do you want to do?
We could place a, you know, we don't have to order 20. We could order two. And the nice thing is they, they can be here, they promise they ship in three to five days.
Three, five business days.
And if we, you know, if we order a couple or three, we could get a sense for exactly how they feel. We could get a run when we are having extremely low traffic. I recommend that we order three. And that would satisfy the traffic. And let's say we test them in the recorder, the auditor, and the treasurer. Those are the three that are probably having the most appointments now. I don't know, maybe, maybe building.
We might need a few more than that. I mean, Treasurer's probably the one that's going to get hit the hardest with taxes.
Well, then that depends on, that's why I mentioned a soft opening. You still keep the public out, they'll only buy appointment, and still make those property tax payments, you know, with the options that are available to them.
Yeah, we're not going to let them in to make those payments unless they have an appointment.
So we get six. Well, I mean, we could have the West Wing and the East Wing each test drive one or two.
$199 for the one, which is 35 and a half inches high by 30, and then its depth is roughly 12 inches. And so they're a good size. We measured it yesterday. It'll work for people that are about six foot in height.
Steve, go by and take a look at what we've got.
I will.
It was very similar in cost to that.
And you can get the distal mention, it could go all the way up, you know, much, much higher. They don't apparently make these until you place the order, and then they still ship in three to five days. So that, it's just that the most popular size, standard size, is that 35 and a half inch.
Well, if you look at that, it does, it takes anybody that's in the six foot, 63 foot height, and it covers them, and it's wide enough.
I think that counter is much, I think it's more than three feet high. I think that counter is maybe 40 inches. And you add 36 inches on top of that, that's going to handle everybody but an NBA kind of guy.
I don't know what the height, I don't know what the height of the clerk's counter is. It might be a little, because I know they've got a, see, they've also got a dropdown for handicap, which makes it different.
Okay, why don't we work on that, Steve? I mean...
Well, I just urge you to start thinking about the next couple of weeks.
So would you go ahead and order a few Jennifer's standing by, and she claimed, we could have those in next week before the tax budget.
I think you're probably talking a couple of weeks. They're big enough, they're going to have to ship probably by truck instead of by UPS.
Oh.
So we're probably looking at two weeks anyway, would be my guess. Unless they got a big supply of order in three to five days, it's not there anymore.
How many are we talking about ordering?
10.
Well, yeah, I would say we could use 10 easily, Denny. I mean, the Treasurer could use three eventually. And I'm trying to look down the road a little bit, that eventually, when we are completely open, that they have three stations down there all the time during normal tax time. You might not always have all three of them up. The recorder could use one. Auditor could use a couple in their area, and then the assessor downstairs, because those are the three that get involved around tax time. And we got, the assessor's going to be sending Form 11s out, I think, next week. So once the Form 11s go out, their volume of telephone calls and stuff are going to go up, because people are going to start asking questions. So those would be the offices that I see really being involved. You do that, you're looking at a couple of thousand dollars.
And I can see the clerk's office really putting those to use in their, anybody that meets the public.
Yep. And that's why I said, I think, once you put a few of these out, the other office is going to see them, and they're going to ask for them, too.
I agree.
Now, I, you know, I have...
Maybe we get a discount if we have more.
In case you're wondering, how did I stumble onto this? This is the manufacturer that CVS, I saw it at the CVS pharmacy counter. I was very impressed with the thickness and how it protected the pharmacists.
They had one of these types there at the CVS.
It had the manufacturer's name and boss in it. And I thought, you know, CVS probably wants to protect their pharmacist pretty well. And so I took a note of the manufacturer, and I thought, you know, this really, because it protected a nice, broad range of the pharmacy. And, and let's face it, the people that are coming to the pharmacy counter are probably pretty high-risk people, you know, higher-risk individuals than come to pay their taxes. So I tracked them down, and I think it'd be nice to test drive them before we're really slammed with the high-volume people. Now, reopening, back to that discussion, I really do not want to open any of the Wayne County government buildings until we have the necessary criteria met. And one of those criteria is much higher level of testing. And as you know, the test kits that I ordered were shut down by the FDA. The source of these inexpensive antibody tests was out of China. For some reason, America can't test antibodies, and the FDA has shut down all but one source. And the one source that's been authorized is just slammed and not talking to me anymore. They were talking two or three weeks ago. Now they're just shut down. And I just cannot seem to get any source for these finger-stick rapid tests. I'm curious, because there was some conversation about our first responders getting tested. Do you have any update on first responder testing?
Well, the last, when I talked to Chief Purcell, and that's been, oh, that's probably been two weeks ago now, Mary Ann, he had arrangements made for the first responders to go over to Lily, who was doing the testing, and they're getting the results back on that in two days. And so I know they had all that set up. Now, did all of them go? I'm sure they did. But I don't know on the response on that. I know they've had a couple that they have quarantined in that area. But other than that, I haven't heard any more. So I assume that went quite well for them.
Well, two, three weeks ago, the sheriff told me he had three room deputies quarantined. What about our 911 operators, their first responders?
They're not having any problems. And Matthews, that's like he said today, he's right on top of that. He's watching it very careful. As a matter of fact, they're wearing their masks all day long, 12 hours during their shift.
Well, not all of them.
Now, back to your comment that you said you don't want to open until you have some things. And now, remember, you had said last week, week before last, that all events at the fairgrounds would be canceled through May. Now, it's my understanding...
It's through June.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, 4-H activities. Purdue has canceled.
I'm talking about just events at the fairgrounds. But now, I do think that you have approved voting there the last of May.
I did get a call from Terrapay, from Vote Center, and they wanted to go ahead and put in place the last of May on there, that last week, just so we didn't, if things cleared up, say tomorrow, that they knew they would be in that center to vote on there. And so I did tell them that we would put that in the book, but there was no guarantee that, one, right now, right now, the way it's set up, we are going to vote in June, but that could be changed, depending on what would happen within the state. You don't know.
So then, any steps that you want us to take, then, to protect those folks who would be coming into that building to vote, the workers, et cetera, et cetera? We're talking about shields and so on and so forth. Is that our responsibility, or is that the voting board, or?
I meant to really end the Debbie's area, I think. And Debbie's asked basically about shields and some stuff, too. And so I haven't talked with her recently, and at the time, I didn't have any information on anything. So certainly, we'll pass this on to her as to what they're thinking about, and what the status is going to be on election. And then any current discussion is whether it's going to be by mail, or how that's going to be, excuse me, and so...
And was there, I assume that there was plans for other vote centers? Is that like we normally do?
Yeah, normally, yeah.
Well, they're going to have their normal vote centers. Kuben Center is one of them, First English Lutheran, the Baptist Church. All the vote centers are the same they've always been. The difference is, the date was a little different.
I understand, but are we to take some precautions for those vote centers, or is that there?
That's going to be, right now, it's going to be up to Debbie.
Okay. I'll just make sure that she...
That's up to Debbie and her election board. The election board, as a matter of fact, just met, and in that, the question came up as to whether or not candidates could put up yard signs. And the election board, we did check that out. And the powers-to-be from the state came back and said that was an election board decision. the state came back and said that was an election board decision. Election board here did decide that an individual candidate could put up their yard sign, because that would be just one person going out and putting up that yard sign.
Okay. Don't think I got a lot of answers this morning, but we'll.
But I think you definitely can order some shields.
Yes, we'll get that done.
And there's other things I still think we, we need to keep, it'll be up on us pretty quick, and.
Now, regarding the fairgrounds, Purdue has ordered that all four-H activities cease
Yep.
through June.
Through June.
Through June.
Through June, okay.
Which means that all county fairs that were taking place in June are postponed.
Right.
Not canceled, but postponed.
Now, do you have a meeting on this tomorrow night, too, to discuss it further?
Yeah, six o'clock tomorrow night at Coleman.
Well, you're distancing, aren't you?
Yes, we're going to scatter about the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
And with megaphones.
Yeah.
We will have a meeting at six o'clock tomorrow night throughout the fairgrounds. I'll be in, in the cattle barn.
There you go.
Alicia will be in the sheep barn, and we will distance meet. So as I understand it, July eleventh is the only meeting.
That's right.
Until Autumn Oaks is still on.
Correct.
In late August, early September.
We're going to reach out to them, make sure that they're still thinking of this, but as of today, it is still on.
Good. So July eleventh and Labor Day weekend are the only two events scheduled at the fairgrounds. So if, if the fair needs to be rescheduled in July or August, as long as we avoid those dates.
Yeah.
The fairgrounds is available to reschedule the four-H fair anytime this summer.
Yeah. And then, remember our conversation last week, we, we've canceled all the events through May. We've not decided on June's events yet. Obviously, we've already had some folks cancel those. Um, so we may see some of those that, if, if this opens back up, you may see some of these folks who had canceled events want to start rescheduling. So that might go into July and August. So we need to make sure we keep communicating as to what the, the fair intentions are to, so we can, you know, accommodate those rentals if we can.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. We, we would rather not have the beef show rescheduled.
Yeah, right.
Cattle, whatever, that July eleventh event, if we can avoid July eleventh. And of course, schools start up so early. We'd like to avoid schools starting. Um, so we might, you know, July eleventh is not necessarily immovable. Maybe they could be persuaded to integrate into the fair or whatever, but.
But, and in fact, that was the original plan, that they would be at the end of the fair.
Oh.
And so this is actually a moved date, so.
Okay, so maybe that is negotiable.
Yeah, I think it is.
The desire is to reschedule the fair, not to have it like the Olympics move to twenty-twenty-one. Believe me.
Have two fairs next year.
Right, two fairs in one.
Okay. And then, as Ken said, we did sanitize another office this week, based upon what they thought was a, a person who came in and later got ill. Uh, so we did that the first, on Monday of this week. The courthouse HVAC project, the balancing of the system continues. They have done the basement, first floor, and they're currently on the second floor. So I do anticipate that that will finish up probably this week, no later than next week. Again, reiterating, the jail bond project has slowed because of the delivery of some materials. But then, since I talked to you last week, we've also had some subcontractors who have, uh, not wanted their workers to come into the, uh, the prisoner area of the jail. They're still willing to work in the enforcement area and in the attic where, where no one is most of the time. But for all practical purposes, the work in the cell block area has, has come to a stop.
Are there liquidated damages on that project?
Does anyone know if there was liquidated damages? And Steve is shaking his no, or his head no.
No, but, you know, there's certainly some deadlines, and, you know, this is, I, I think we're going to have to have some accommodation on scheduling on this, some discussion back and forth. I, I do believe our, our general contractor will keep this moving as, as quickly as they can.
Yeah.
But they're up against some issues that they just don't have any control over. The jail and courthouse security equipment project, we have finished reviewing the, the bid document that will go out, and I'll be giving that back to DLZ today. So that will go out for bids, uh, probably in the next couple of days.
Excellent.
Then the Guardian and Lightem office, again, we have done our interior work to, in-house work to move the, the twenty-amp circuits that's required for that. And the, Mary Ann, in response to your, your follow-up, our contract is with the state of Indiana on this. This is through the, uh, family, Indiana Family Social Services Administration, and they, they, through a federal law, through their voc rehab services, have the, the right to be in public buildings to do these services. They have a contract with their, uh, through their state bid, if you will, with the feds, of who moves these machines throughout the state. So in answer to your question, could they use another contractor? They indicate they can't, simply because they're under contract with another company to, to do the moving wherever county they're in.
Okay.
Now, I do think reasonably, though, if, if I don't get some movement from them in, I'm saying, two weeks, but that's my, that's not a necessary drop-dead date, but I'm going to move them ourselves.
And disconnect them?
Yes. They're just plug-in units. They, they don't, they're not hardwired or anything.
No chance of them being damaged or rusted out, or mold formation, or damages that we'd be liable for if they're disconnected?
No, we've, we've got appliance movers, movers that slides under and can lift up. I, I don't, I don't think that that would be any issue, but.
No free-on leaking liability?
No.
I worry for a living.
No, I understand that. So I, but I guess what I'm saying is that that's another project we need to.
Move along.
Keep moving along, because it's kind of a domino effect. You know, the one court has hired their bailiff, the bailiff goes into the one room, the one room goes to another room. So the, the fact we're not able to get this.
Moved.
Moved, it's backing everything else up.
They got boxes of books and records already packed up, ready to move.
Yeah.
I think we need to send them a letter saying, if this is not moved by May first, then we will disconnect them. And by the way, there is no traffic in the courthouse now due to COVID-19, so you're not doing any business anyway, so we're going to disconnect them as of X date.
Yeah, yeah.
I think.
There you go.
I think you really have the authority to do that.
Well, the contract doesn't, we, we have a contract with them, and it doesn't.
Due to circumstances that are an act of God, and we have no control over it.
Well, I, I tend to go the other way. What are they going to do to me if I do it?
Right. Well, I think you need to give them written warning that you're going to do it to them.
I will, I will, I will.
Yeah.
All right.
And give them a date.
Steve, thank you very much. And I want to touch the way back, Mary Ann. In just a few short words, you resolved that, see. Now, if you do the same thing for the department head as to wear their masks now, see, we can resolve that issue.
Just need to give it a little thought.
Well, thank you, because we're at the end of our meeting here today.
No, we're not. I have a list of ten things.
Oh, my gosh. Well, we'll come back then.
It's only ten forty.
Beth, what do you have for us today?
Um, very little.
Okay.
Mike Sharp is presenting his non-cash fringe benefit reporting form for the period of January one to March thirty-first. Um, it is due, and he asks if you please sign. A total of non-cash fringe for uniforms is eighty-six, eighty-four.
Move for approval.
Second.
Well, call the roll, Beth.
Yes. Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Paus?
Aye.
If you can't turn this volume up, if you need to hear more, there's a button right there. Try now.
Say something, Denny.
Hello, central.
Oh, good, good. We got you.
Much better.
We raised your volume up. You're coming across a lot louder now.
And then, last week, you did authorize a resolution to transfer a law enforcement vehicle to Milton.
Yes.
I think Ron has a resolution that has not had time to review it.
I do.
Because I just put it in your box yesterday, last evening.
Hmm. Okay, he must be out there.
Okay. But it's, it's prepared as soon as it's.
That's great, okay.
Are we going to have to wait another week?
Un, unless.
I'm going to take a look at it. Ron's going to go see if he's, get it out of his box, Denny.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it could be approved, it'll be his.
Okay. Yeah, Ron's got it there.
And comfort level.
I would like to know, can I make a motion to approve the resolution based on our attorney? As long as our attorney's okay with it and authorize the president to execute the resolution.
It's twenty-twenty-oh-oh-three is the resolution number.
Did you hear that, Mary Ann?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just.
Uh, Denny would like to make a motion to authorize the president to sign.
It's actually all three commissioners.
All three to sign if it's approved by the attorney. Ron's got it here. Hold on, Denny.
I thought we did that already.
You authorized the resolution to be prepared.
Oh, is that all we did?
Last week.
So this is just approving the resolution, huh?
Yeah, it looks fine.
Okay.
I move, move for approval.
Twenty-twenty-zero-dash-zero-zero-three is the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
Clark, please call the roll.
Denny Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Paus?
Aye.
Denny, we'll sign that, and it's on its way, then.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, there, Ron.
It's in draft form, I think.
I have two copies and final form.
Superior three-one. Oh, collection, yeah, I got it.
Is that it? You finished? Okay, all right, Mary Ann.
I want to express gratitude to the Indiana Association of County Commissioners and its executive director, Stephanie, for pulling together a nourishing webinar on Monday with Crow Accounting and, uh, various people, state, especially the bond bank, because apparently the citizens of Indiana are so grateful for there not being any penalties for not paying their property taxes in May. And the state has done some research, and apparently, a large number of people are not going to pay their property taxes in May, and they're going to wait until July to pay their property taxes. And this has set up a concern for the June distribution to counties having a huge shortfall. Imagine that. So, um, the webinar was, um.
Today, we would like to encourage all of our citizens to pay their taxes.
No, I'm sure the citizens of Wayne County, no later than May thirteenth, are going to pay their property taxes in full, thereby assuring that the essential services of Wayne County government.
Can continue.
And the schools, and the libraries, and the streets and roads, and all of the gears of government will continue to turn in a fine fashion without clogging and stopping all of the services that are essential to a happy, healthy government that serves us all. However, there are some counties where citizens are going to wait till July to pay their taxes, which will create a gap in funding. So the bond bank and, um, Association and AIC apparently is having their webinar today. But it is really important to get on top of this, because there's a lot of counties that will not be able to, uh, bridge that gap. Uh, for example, if you're expecting a ten million dollar distribution, they're warning that the June distribution will be something like three. Now, I think we probably need to get ourselves brace for the fact, there might be a couple of Wayne County taxpayers that may take advantage of that relief on the July penalty. Um, that we really don't expect Wayne County taxpayers to do that, but there's a chance.
I agree with you. I think, well, they'll, they'll pay their bills.
I think Wayne County will step up to the plate and pay those property taxes no later than May thirteenth. Already have a three-day reprieve, so three days is plenty. Why wait till July?
That's right.
But I think we need to really be looking at this, and I know that going to the bond bank is something we do not want to do, but getting our financial statements and doing this. Ron, I don't know, have, have you had the experience with going to the bond bank for a bridge, kind of a loan, is that?
No, we've always, it used to.
We've always had the cash flow.
Well, it used to be that it was just an annual thing we did at the school corporation when we were so dependent on general fund revenues, because obviously, revenue's skewed for receipts, June settlement, December settlement, and expenses skewed with the end of the school year and the payout of those staff members, the teachers in particular, that collected their pay in lump sum for the, instead of deferring over the summer. So we did what we're known as tax anticipation warrants, and did them every year. And that was back in the day when the interest of earned was exceeded the interest paid at a tax exempt rate. So we haven't done any lately.
Right.
And I've not gone to the bond bank, but I think that would have to be the most cost-effective manner in which to do it if it became necessary. Because I read the blurb, and I think that's essentially what they're talking about. They're talking about tax anticipation warranting through the bond bank.
And a lot of counties have had to do that long before COVID-19. Uh, we, we have the cash flow here. Um, I don't anticipate that we're going to have to do that here in Wayne County.
Okay.
Uh, but there are a lot of counties, and, um, they will have to do that. And some of them are just going to have to borrow more money than what they've borrowed in the past on there. But I think we're going to be fine here. Um, if not, then, you know, we certainly can look at that. But, uh, if we can keep from doing that, that's a costly to Wayne County, and that's a, we don't really want to pay that interest. And so, um, we have enough now to carry us through June. We'll see what, we'll find out pretty quickly how many people pay or don't pay, so we'll know. And we've got our reserves that we can tap into, that we can run for many months without having to borrow money.
I just think we need to consider having a patriotic, um, message going forth, joining hands with the city and the schools, that it will be costly to us if, because money isn't free. There will be interest.
Correct.
If, if, there will be no penalty for you, but there will be interest coming out of your school children's classrooms, out of your highway and your, you know, your sheriff's pockets if you don't pay in May. You know, pay in May, be a patriot, pay in May.
That's right.
Because money isn't free. And, um, you know, while it's maybe tempting to wait, and those who have not lost their jobs, those who do still have income, um, those who are still getting their social security checks.
Right.
And there, there are, certainly those who have lost their, their paychecks, that, that is who that relief is for. It's not for those who can't pay in May.
And most folks, as some of our employees have mentioned, have received their stipend from the federal government. It's in their checking accounts. So there really isn't any reason why they shouldn't pay their taxes on time.
I don't know about you. Have you heard of anybody that's got their twelve hundred dollars?
Right there.
Really?
Yes, it's in their account.
Excellent.
In Atlanta, the one that queued me in.
Yeah, so it's.
I think we're the only team.
It's showing up, so check your checking accounts, and very well could be in there. What else do you have, Mary Ann?
Okay, um, we all received, um, a, um, email from a funeral director in Wayne County. I contacted. I contacted him and said, what relief are you seeking? I don't know, Ron, did you get that as well?
I don't believe so.
Apparently Wayne County may be the only county that only allows five individuals to be at a gravesite. The governor's direction is to allow no more than 10. And it's since that conversation, he has sent a request and some county directives. Our surrounding counties all permit the governor's guidance to have no more than 10 individuals at gravesite with physical distancing of six feet at the gravesite. Apparently what's happening, since all of our surrounding counties do permit 10 individuals at the gravesite, Wayne County funeral directors are losing business to our surrounding counties since they allow 10 family members at the gravesite. And what they are asking is that Wayne County revise that directive, which I have never seen. Ken, have you ever seen that directive? I've never seen it, I have no idea what it is.
I knew, I knew they'd sent a directive out, but I hadn't seen the content of it.
I don't know what the penalties are, I've, in other counties, it's the commissioners that have sent that out and I think the commissioners, like all of these directives, should come from the executive body. I've requested it from the health department, have not received it. I would like to, over the next week, work with the health department. I think it's reasonable to follow the governor's direction of 10 rather than five. As this funeral director pointed out, the deceased was the mother of six and this funeral director had to instruct the family that only five of the children, the mother, could be at the gravesite.
Is the directive five total, I mean, or?
Five.
Five family members, because you're gonna have probably a minister, a representative from the funeral home who's gonna be there overseeing the services.
Right, he's asking, apparently it's five, counting the minister and family.
So you're right down, down to three at that point?
Right, you're down to two.
Two or three, yeah.
And he just feels that five is not sufficient at the gravesite, or maybe it's the ash distribution site, some do it over a body of water or farmland, so I think it shouldn't just be a graveyard, you know, it could be any outdoor celebration of life or burial. But I think the request is very reasonable to be in line with the governor's direction and our surrounding counties. I think going from five to 10 is very reasonable and I would like to work with the health department to, number one, allow us to see what they've set out, and they have never sent it out on health department letterhead, it's all been by very casual email. And when families are just shown an email from the health department, you know, they're at a vulnerable point of grieving and they'd like to say, well, how official is this? I think we, as commissioners, have a right to see this and I think should have the right to authorize and approve such a directive, which has been so hard on many families in Wayne County. I think we should talk with the health department and I think we should have the authority to approve or disapprove such an action that has greatly affected many families in Wayne County.
I don't have any problems with you talking to the health department.
I think we, as commissioners, should have them, we should reach out to them.
Although I, I will say, I know our, our health departments, especially Dr. Jettmore and Christine, are working extremely hard to keep the folks in Wayne County safe. I'm not sure that the five people they're talking about actually includes the staff of the funeral home, I don't, I don't know on that.
I've requested their order, have never received it.
But that's, I know they're working very hard to hold it down and looking at our numbers, we've been very successful not only with this, with other restrictions that we have put in place in there and, but that's fine, give Christine and Dr. Jettmore a call.
I have, I've, I've had no response, I've been asking you to do the same. Are you still on a task force with them, are you still meeting with them?
We have a, we have a board meeting tomorrow.
A board meeting?
They have.
Health board.
Health board meeting tomorrow.
Already.
And the task force meets on, all by phone, on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And so we meet by telephone.
I'll make a point there.
Yeah.
They never respond to my request, would you please bring it up to them and say this is very important, it's affected a lot of people, it's losing business for Wayne County businesses, going to other counties that have the 10-person limit.
I guess I'm surprised.
I'm skeptical of that.
Yeah, I am too, I'm very skeptical of that.
Do you want examples of it, I can provide them for you.
Yes, would you please?
I will do that.
I'd like to have those examples. And secondly, I don't wanna even suggest that the commissioners can overrule the health department. I don't, I don't think we wanna do that, we, it's not in our prerogative.
I think we should talk to them about it and why do other counties have the commissioners establishing this funeral home policy?
I do not know, all I know is what we do here.
Okay, well, I don't have any problem, Mary Ann, for you and I'll, I'll find out, hey, if they haven't called you back, why, I know they're busy and I know sometimes I have to wait a day or so before they give back to me.
I'm not requesting a call, I'm just requesting a copy of the funeral directive.
Directive, okay.
I've never seen it, I need to review.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get one, all right. Got anything else?
Yes, the noise ordinance request that came from Webster Township.
Yes.
It's not just the noise, the music that is played and I know we really don't have a noise ordinance out in the county, we have a barking dog ordinance.
Right.
And while I know we have a decibel level of farm equipment that probably exceeds the decibel level of any woofers that could be created by any musical instrument, Ron, I am wondering, because the lyrics to this music that's being blasted in Webster Township is vulgar, profane, lascivious, are there any laws?
Sounds like it constitutes, I don't know what they're talking about, but it sounds like it constitutes a nuisance.
Yes, now, I'm.
That would be something that I would think the town, Marshall?
It's out in the county, it's out, way outside any municipal boundary.
Oh, okay.
That's what, I'm, I'm looking for guidance because when the sheriff's deputies have been out, there have been numerous complaints over two years and the deputies claim there are no laws whatsoever that can even have them counsel the party who's blasting the music. It rattles windows, I drove out there and it's, as the crow flies, at least a thousand yards, maybe 800 yards from the music source, that rattles windows. The music is played well after midnight, the children can't sleep.
This is the first I've heard of it, so I'll have to talk, Steve, we can talk about it, but I, I'm not sure that.
Nuisance laws.
It's gonna find any type of niche within zoning ordinance.
It's pretty hard right now on that one and we've had this discussion before and it's hard to, it is a problem, there isn't any doubt about that and it's a difficult one to enforce, because one, we don't have an ordinance and two, then you gotta be out there and catch them when it happens. So if they know you're coming, they just turn it down and so then there's, it's kinda like the dog barking thing that we had, when they go out there, the dogs aren't barking.
It, it goes on for a long period of time, usually after midnight. And he, and, and when asked to tone it down, he does not, so I think.
I think it's worth, Ron and Steve.
I don't, haven't talked to the sheriff.
He would be the one to enforce it, so it would make sense to me that you at least ought to have that conversation with the sheriff to see if he can even, because other, other ordinances that we have have been selectively ignored.
I mean, if, there's.
Well, I think the first issue is, do we have anything in place? I'm not sure we do, but.
No, we don't have anything in place.
Am I reaching for the profanity and indecency and?
Sometimes that's in the ears of the older.
Well, but there are laws that do not allow certain, I mean, when it comes to juveniles being exposed to indecency, I mean, there are some laws and.
I think that's a stretch.
I know, but, I mean, this poor man, he's.
If you listen to the music today, I mean.
He's been patient for two years.
Talk about juveniles, he listens to music they're playing and they listen to it pretty bad.
I guess the only silver lining, this is next door to the gentleman who has had more than 60 Freedom of Information.
Oh, oh, you gotta be kidding me. I recognize that name real quick, okay, all right, anything else?
Uh, let me see. Oh, where is the lease agreement with the health center?
I'm working on it.
Okay, 'cause that, that's a TikTok, I, I just don't want that to get lost in the shuffle here. That was my top 10.
Very good, very good. Well, let's go back to, take a deep breath and let's go back to the department heads and elected officials and being able to tell folks in their departments, we'd like for you to wear a mask.
I think as long as we can provide them with government-issue PPE, that's fine with me, but until we can provide it, I really don't wanna encourage it.
Well, we've got them on order, so.
Like the thermometers.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't heard they've been backordered yet.
I don't wanna issue it until we can provide the goods.
This is a policy thing, it's not a mandated thing by the commissioners. It allows the department heads to use their own judgment regarding what they should do for their people that work in their office.
I, I, I thought it stemmed from Matthew Kane's policy specifically when a person is ill with a fever, when they may return to work and how long they must wear a mask when they do return to work.
And that is the policy that Matthew's setting up in his office.
That's Matthew's policy.
That's right.
Right, and I, and I.
My, my motion would agree with what Matthew did, but that shouldn't apply to every department head, that there may be slightly different policies in other departments.
You don't think we should have a policy regarding sick people coming to work?
Well, we pretty, we pretty much have a policy in place already that if you're sick, you don't come to work, if you have a temperature, you don't come to work and you need three days without a temperature before you even consider coming back to work.
Where is that written?
It's in the emergency order, I thought, that we placed.
No.
I'm not aware of it.
I'm not sure that we actually have that in there, I, I think that's kinda what we have put out there to all of our people when they've asked of, how soon should somebody come back and we've pretty much said three days and that's been consistent, not only with us, but with the city and so on.
That's not written.
Well, you're absolutely correct and that they go three days and you hear that from Dr. Kraft and everybody.
But we have not put anything in writing, you see, my point is, I think we should not make that optional for every department head. The only policy we have is.
That's where we disagree, I think we absolutely should trust our department heads to think they care about their people just as much as we do, they're not stupid.
Well, so, but we do have a policy, you can't come in the building if you have a fever.
Okay.
That's the only policy we have.
That's good enough then.
Well, maybe, maybe for the sake of the conversation, back to Ron's original point.
I cannot hear Steve.
You wanna at least endorse what Matthew has done and then go on to something else?
What Steve suggested, that we endorse Matthew's policy and then we could adopt another policy for other department heads.
Yep, I'm okay with that.
That we approve, we approve what Matthew's doing at this time and then we talk about other, because there is a big difference between the auditor and the treasurer's office and what they're doing in 911 currently at this time, yes. So we could do that.
I'm okay with that.
We could do that and get that one out of the way.
Just make that optional though.
You wanna make a motion on that one, Denny?
Yes, I do.
All right.
To support, to support Matthew's policy.
Okay.
But make it optional.
No, we're just gonna support the policy that Matthew's doing in 911, then we'll talk about the others.
You wanna read, you wanna read your motion back?
My motion is to support the policies established by the 911.
For their department?
For their department only.
Right, okay.
But not to require anybody to wear a mask, just.
That's, that's correct.
That's just.
His policy.
That's right, that's just his policy, that's only one department right now. What do you think, Mary Ann? Hearing that, so I'll second the motion, please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
I would not want this to go out as a standalone policy as all the commissioners have to say about that.
This is, remember, this is just approving what Matthew's doing right now, it's all, it's all we're doing.
For Matthew's employees.
Right.
Okay. Aye.
Aye, I vote aye, pass, okay, now, that's out of the way, now we're open for discussion for other departments throughout Wayne County government. And the discussion is to authorize, Denny, you were talking about, a motion to authorize all the individual department heads to make a decision in their individual offices.
That's correct.
We haven't even had a distancing policy put out.
It's six foot.
We can't address every situation, but our department heads can address all the situations for their department.
I will tell you, employees, with the exception of a few, are doing a very good job of social distancing. Even as much as washing hands in the sink.
Right.
In the bathroom.
You don't have to tell them to stay six foot apart, I tell you, even walking down the hallway, they'll spread to the side of the hallway.
Yeah, those of us still walking are taking it seriously.
And we can trust our department heads to do the right thing.
But if we're gonna issue a policy, shouldn't we at least acknowledge the fundamentals of a COVID policy?
You could add into that motion that we would encourage all of our department heads to look at the standards that have been established, basic on the six-foot separation on there and if anybody has a temperature or is feeling sick, that they go home immediately, those are some of the standard things that we're all talking about, that they're all implementing. I know we have been doing that on a very everyday basis within our offices here and all the other, but you could put that in there if that makes you feel better.
Well, what have we put out to date? I think we need to put out what we've put out today, have we told people to take their temperature before coming to work, for example?
We have put that out to everybody to take their temperatures.
Twice a day.
Twice daily, we've also asked them to monitor their own health condition, there isn't anybody that knows their body better than that individual.
But you see, if we're gonna be issuing a policy, my point is, before we start firing out policies on computers, I suppose that's how you were thinking to do this, right? I think we need to look at what have we put out already? You know, just shotgunning policy without examining what have we put out already and what is this in context with what has been issued?
Basically, Mary Ann, we have a 30% minimum reduction in staff within Wayne County government, highway department, we're doing a split shift out there.
I know what we're doing, but what I wanna see on paper, what have we set out already so that? so that we can...
And I, I think we're getting off the mark here. She's going right back into, let's dictate to our department heads and elected officials what they can do. And I'm thinking our policy can be one sentence, to support our elected officials and department heads in their, as they comply with all the government requirements or suggestions for their office.
Denny, we've already dictated, we've already had rules issued throughout county government. All I'm suggesting we do is take a look at what we've already dictated before we start issuing any other dictates, like supporting Matthew's policy.
And I want to just extend that.
I just want to stop and take a look at what we have set out already. So...
Well, you were there, you were there when we put it out. So, why do we have to stop? You already know what we put out.
There have been things go out on the computer that I have not seen, because I didn't, wasn't there to see the pop-up computer.
Not from the commissioners, there hasn't. There may have been from the Health Department, but not from the commissioners. You've been a part of every decision we've made.
Well, and I'm just saying, let's take a look at everything that's been sent out as a directive to Wayne County government employees. That's all I'm saying. We, we, because we look, shall we say, a little disjunct if we do not take a look at what we have issued to date.
Well, if your suggestion, we wait another week, I'm okay with that. But I will oppose any attempt to dictate to our department heads and elected officials what they have to do in their office.
Well, we've already sent out dictation, okay? And I don't know what all has gone out. I see pop-ups all the time when I come in, saying, "Oh, gee, I didn't know that was a policy." Okay? I just want to see what all has gone out in terms of direction, guidance, rules, you know, like, "Take your temperature twice a day." I've never seen that. When did that go out? How did it go out?
I think if you looked in the minutes, you'd find it.
That's never been commissioners' minutes.
I don't know.
I, I, I think, Mary Ann, of what you're talking about, there hasn't been, like, where we have sat down on one piece of paper and we've written down, okay, you know, about taking your temperature, that the individual should do that. I don't know that we've done that. What we have done, we have put the word out to all the department heads in conversations with them, whether we did it on a pop-up through HR in some cases or not. But the word has gotten out to all of them, and they're all very familiar with that. From the time we actually started taking temperatures at the front door, from when we closed the building, and we told everybody that, and as you well know, you tell one office, and the word gets to all the offices very quickly on there. But I think we have not had one sheet that said we're doing all these things on there. And most of our people would say, "Well, we're already doing all of that. That's what we were supposed to be doing." And that's...
And also, I, I don't know if the stuff we put out said should or shall. I don't think much of it...
I think we need to take a look at it before we start issuing disjunct, non-coordinated, just by, you see what I'm saying is that, and that didn't reach Highway. It didn't reach some people who were not present, didn't see the pop-ups. I think it's time before we start just firing out uncoordinated policy.
I don't think one sentence fires out anything.
And when, when the word gets out, it does not get out to everybody. It certainly doesn't get out to Highway.
Highway function is different. We're usually in constant contact with Mike Sharp, who passes the word on, and is always in contact with HR to make sure that they're complying with any of the suggestions that we have out to individuals and even into the FMLA leave and all of that, that is available. All of that has been in writing. It is out to all those folks in that particular case. So, where are we here, guys?
I'd like to wait a week and take a look at what all has been issued as guidelines to county employees.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, sounds good. We're going to wait a week. Anything else? Beth?
No.
Ron? Steve? Mary Ann?
Yep.
Well, all right. We'll adjourn by general consent. Go ahead.